Our call this board of selectmen's meeting to order for Tuesday, November 10. So we have Phil Crossman, Darla Poole, myself, Pam Alley, Jake Thompson, Andy Dorr, town manager. Group agenda, no additions, right? That's good. And will we approve the agenda as presented? All those in favor? Minutes, approve the minutes from the October 27th meeting. Second, moved by Phil Crossman, seconded by me, all those in favor? Proven sign treasures warrant number 19. Our second it, and all those in favor? Communications, why don't we go in trust? Questions, comments? Okay, speakers from floor? Anybody? Seeing none, committee and department reports and appointments, sea level rise, committee resignation. Joe Reynolds would like to get off of the...
You forget to project your voice so that folks can hear you on the mic.
Project, project.
I move, we accept Joe Reynolds resignation from the sea level rise committee.
Second.
Seconded by Pam Alley. All those in favor? Planning and community development update.
Hi, I'm actually going to merge my planning and community development updates into the ad hoc committee updates that you requested from the last meeting. So Matt is going to, in old business, he's going to be talking some more about the community inventory and best practices. So he'll be sharing a little bit more about the, what we have on the docket for ad hoc and the statute and ordinance committees. But some of what you see here are actually sort of formed as ad hoc committees, but have established themselves as standing committees. So they're sort of around indefinitely. So I'm just really going to speak to the ones that are the ad hoc committees, which were formed for a particular task, to accomplish a particular task within a, whether it was a pre-assigned timeframe or what ended up being a certain timeframe. So regarding the downtown committee, we know that committee was formed to produce the downtown master plan. So that has been accomplished. The downtown committee has not dissolved as we're not done with the downtown project. And they are provided with regular updates as, as to the progress of where the downtown project is, which right now it's in a very, a state of looking for funding. So that's where that is at the moment. So the committee has not been active, but they receive updates and they are sort of on standby as needed with public engagement. And if there's time when we need to talk about the downtown projects some more, which we will, as through the winter and into the spring, the downtown committee members are sort of on standby for that. I'll skip over ferry tariff advisory. Phil is definitely part of that, and that is one of the standing committees. We do not have updates tonight from fireworks or housing. Community Development Corporation, which is the new committee that you guys just formed in the end of September, the CDCC, that I will give an update on more specifically along with sea level rise in just a moment. And then I'm not going to report on Fox Island because that will, Fox Island Broadband Task Force, that's also coming after sea level rise with a report about the broadband report. And we are fortunate tonight, we have Amy and Pat from Waste Watchers here. So they're going to be giving an update on the swap shop survey. So I will also not be providing an update on the solid waste composting and recycling ordinance committee, AKA Waste Watchers. But I do know that Anna and I are also working on an annual report for you regarding the compost project because we're sort of a year into the project and we want to provide you with an update on that. So before I go on to Community Development Corporation, Sea Level Rise, and then on to the next agenda item of the broadband report, do you guys have any questions with what was presented so far?
I don't think you're good.
Okay, all right. Well, then I will go on to the next slide. So the CDCC had their very first meeting, which was an orientation meeting. And then this is just an overview of the committee's timeframe and their work plan over the next few months. Their goal is to really wrap up their, the primary work that they need to do by May. So we are meeting once a month and we will provide you with regular updates on how that's going. And we're starting really just with a lot of research and understanding around what other communities have done. And so next, our next meeting is on the 19th and we're going to be having a conversation with the folks from Islesborough. So the Islesborough Sustainable Economic, I can't remember, I can't remember what it's called. I always forget their acronym. But anyway, they have, they have a CDC that's newly formed. It's a quasi municipal CDC. And so really wanting to model what we do off of that, what they have done. They had a, they had a great community process. So the folks from their CDC are coming to, or meeting with us on Zoom to provide us with information and a chance to have a Q and A with them. And then we're going to talk a little bit about the state's 10-year economic development plan. And we're going to look at the resilience goals of the Climate Council because there's a lot of long-term sort of visioning around resilience and you know what that means in terms of a community's ability to stay strong in the face of adversity. So we're going to look at what the state is doing and see how that might inform what we want to do here in terms of long-term visioning for our, our community, how that, how does that apply to our community? So going on from there is really the questions of like, what is this entity? You know, what would most benefit our community? How would it function? What would it support? Really looking at those different focus areas, the strategies. And then behind the scenes, George Kendrick, who is our committee chair, and I will be looking into more of the, the legal structure and all of those sort of nuts and bolts that would put a type of organization or entity like this together. So after May, there will still be work that likely I will be doing and the committee will be sort of on standby. But as we discussed when we set up this committee, the goal was that it would be a one-year committee. So, and since we know that most committees do not meet during the summer, it's a busy time for everyone. We, we created a timeline that would have us ending the committee's work in May. So any questions or feedback on the CDCC? Okay, well, thank you. And I'll provide a little update on sea level rise. So I just wanted to share sort of where sea level rise committee is at the moment. We're really focusing on some data collection projects and we're working on our own project, which we are going to start publicizing. We're sort of in a pilot phase right now, so just trying to get the kinks worked out. But you've likely seen, or people in the community have likely seen some of these markers up around the community in various, what we're calling our vulnerable locations. So these are areas that we're sort of monitoring and collecting data on. So that's our tide monitoring project that we have sort of initiated and started and we're working with Letitia Van Buren at Knox County EMA, who's providing our GIS support for that project. And she right now is holding the data on that for us and managing the data. We also are involved in another citizen science project that we are just starting to launch in, we're doing that through, with GMRI, so Gulf of Maine Research Institute. And that is a grant-funded project that we're partnering with them on. So that's going to be a citizen science project that allows really any member of the community, anywhere, anytime, to be able to make observations, collect data using online web tool and then provide that information again, anytime, wherever they are. And that, that's just to help us sort of monitor and tell the story of changes over time. And we all have those anecdotal stories and certainly, you know, we'll hear things about people saying it's always flooded, this has always happened. But what we really are trying to do is capture that data so we can make some stronger decisions around, you know, where we need to invest in, you know, either preservation of certain areas or infrastructure that, that needs to have some adaptation done to it. So that's what the data collection projects are all about. And then at, at our last presentation to you in the, the late, or I say, yeah, I would say early spring, late winter of this year, we talked a little bit about incorporating more climate change into the work that this sea level rise committee is doing. So some of the stuff we're doing is definitely working with a lot of other partners. So, so one of our, Lenell, who's on our, on our, we have different work groups and Lenell is on our planning work group. And so she's involved in a project with Southern Maine, another acronym that I'm not going to remember. Anyway, Southern Maine Development and Planning Office, something like that, forgive me, I can't remember the name of it. But that, they're doing a model coastal resilience ordinance project, so creating ordinances that any community can adopt that helps address certain climate impacts and sea level rise. So Lenell's working on that. I'm working on a project called Collaborating Toward Climate Solutions, and that's really much, really around networking with other coastal communities and trying to share resources around how communities are using their resources to adapt to different aspects of climate change. And then we are about to start into another climate change planning project called Sea Rise, which is with GMRI and the Island Institute. So that should provide us with a lot of resources that are in alignment with the Maine Climate Council and their recommendations. So our, I feel like a lot of the work that the sea level rise committee is doing now is sort of gathering information and bringing that information back to this community and seeing where things are applicable and where things are in alignment with what works for this community. So that's a, that's a sort of a high level overview of what the sea level rise committee is doing. So any questions or feedback on that?
Question. How, how many years is the data going to be collected over? Is it a one-year study like with the picture you have there of the, you know, the tide gauge and the other things? How many year, years of that? Is it going to be ongoing for?
Yeah, yeah, I, yep. I mean, essentially, there's no end date that has been set. It's, it's really that the more data we collect, the better, and the longer it goes, the more of a story it tells. You know, one, once or twice or one year doesn't tell much of a story, but over time is where you, you know, where you see some, where you see the, the story and you, you better understand the data. So this is just a start, a very, very beginning. Okay, any other questions or feedback? Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Fox Islands Broadband Task Force broadband report presentation.
All right, guys, you get to listen to me some more. So fortunately, Jananne Sherman, who is the Fox Island Broadband Task Force Chair, is with me as well. So Jananne is going to speak toward the end of this presentation and I will be walking us through what is going to be a high-level overview of our long-awaited 2020 broadband report. It's called the Vinyl Haven Internet Planning Document. Next slide, please. So first, I will say that the report is going to be available on the town website, likely by the end of this week, might be the beginning of next week, but I will let you know, we're just doing some final copy edits on it. So I will make sure that the community knows and that you know that it will be available when it is available. And then the other thing I wanted to say was that the report will be presented in full, along with having Mark Olet, who's the author of the report. He will be at this next presentation. So we're going to do a community-wide presentation on Zoom and that's going to be on December 3rd and it'll be from 6:00 to 7:15. Actually, could I go to the next slide, the previous slide, Andy? Thank you so much. Okay, so now I am going to just give a quick overview. So just to, just to recap about who our committee is. We have a nine-member committee and we've listed all of our committee members here and I just give, want to give credit where credit is due. So we've got Bob Barrett, George Fosk, we have a couple of select board members, we have Eric Gasparini, Norbert Laser, Patrick McCormick, DW Poole, Riley Poole, Patrick Shane, and then of course, our fearless leader, Jananne Sherman, who is our board chair. And a little background, the select board formed the broadband committee after the publication of the 2015 Tilson Report, which provided an island-wide assessment of our current internet infrastructure and possibilities for what it might take to serve the entire island. And the mission of the Fox Island Broadband Task Force is to support the town in its efforts to pursue a broadband solution for Vinyl Haven that will provide accessible future-proof internet speeds to everyone in the community. So exploring community-wide broadband options over the last few years has led the community to establish these goals for an island-wide broadband solution. So really what the community is focused on in a broadband solution is that we have education, like more educational opportunities, so improve student connectivity. We were looking at sustainable economic development, so really increasing the telecommunicating options and services that existing businesses have, existing businesses have access to, access for everyone to, to telemedicine. And this idea of equal access to everyone, so same levels of service, no matter where you're located on the island. Speed and reliability, so no matter how many people are on the island, you're going to have fast speeds, you're, you're going to be able to access what you need to, no matter what the current demand is on the system. Future-proof technology, and that to us is a fiber optic system and a fiber to the premise, so a fiber optic system right to your home. And symmetrical service, so the ability to download and upload at the same speed. And really what we found is that achieving these broadband goals now is more relevant than ever before. And we know this because what we've seen in the coronavirus pandemic, it's really made working and schooling from home absolutely essential. And it's also shown us the need for internet access to maintain social connection, especially when people are forced to stay at home. And we've seen from the state and from the feds that they have a response to this in terms of what they're providing now for funding opportunities. So we're really sort of poised to take advantage of these funding opportunities. 15 million state bonds that we voted on at our last, last election, the one before last, and $60 million through the CARES Act. And those funds, well, all those funds are going to become available in the spring or summer. So having an infrastructure project sort of ready to go is, is, it's, it's sort of now is the time. So the next logical move for the broadband committee was really to put out a request for proposals, which they did in 2019, the last year, which seems like forever ago now. So we got a planning grant from the Island Institute and we were able to match, that was some of our, our fund from our service fees funds from our planning department. And we put out a request for proposals and what we were looking for was a high-level view of various broadband options that were in alignment with our goals. We wanted to know what would that look like? We were able to hire Mark Olet, he's the president and CEO of Acxiom Technologies. And Mark worked with the committee to produce what we have today, the 2020 Broadband Report, Vinyl Haven Internet Planning Document. And so the report really looks at various options for fiber-to-the-premise models that are in alignment with our goals, they meet our goals. It looks at town-owned and public-private partnership options, examples from other communities, high-level build-out costs, operational costs, a timeline for phased construction approach, funding solutions, so options for grants, private investment, public funding, et cetera. So I'm going to give a little bit more of a detailed, high-level overview of the report now. So I'll just go through the various sections of the report in a little more detail. So we start out by talking about the benefits of fiber optics. And we do this so whoever's reading the document gets an understanding of why we, we want to go with fiber. And really, it's because it's, it's an investment that will last. So it's, it's really like a good 30-year investment before you need to do anything to this system. It's future-proof, it's sort of scalable, if you want more demand on the system, you can have more demand. It's very reliable. We also have a section in the report about working with incumbent providers. And this is really important because we wanted to reach out to both Consolidated and Spectrum. In the past, there hasn't been interest in, in offering more service to the island than what already exists. So we wanted to know from them, like, are you, would you be interested in providing service to the entire island? And what would it take for that to happen, for you to service all locations on the island? Consolidated reached out to us, they shared a high-level cost estimate, and that would be to replace their current DSL system with fiber optics. And this is a very sort of back, back-of-the-napkin high-level cost, but they provided that to us at 3.3 million. Spectrum was also very interested in talking with us about it, but at, at the time of the report and as of yet has still not provided us with a high-level cost estimate. The report also looks at some other options for how we would achieve our broadband solution. So a town-owned system that might be operated by a third internet, internet service provider or ISP. It explores a little bit about part, what, what, what a partnership with the Fox Island Electric Cooperative could look like. So Fox Eye isn't really interested in that type of a partnership at this time, but it is something that other communities are doing, other communities that have a utility are doing. So we wanted to put, put that information there so people knew that it, it is an idea worth exploring. And then Mark has provided us also with some great examples of, of various ownership models that are in the state of Maine and on other islands. So like a town-owned and operated model, which is what Islesborough has, a town-owned, town-owned but operated by an ISP, which is what Cranberry Isles has. A system that is owned by island investors but operated by an ISP, and that is Cliff Island. And then he also has an example in there about forming a public utility. So that's something that Callis and Bayleville have done with what's called the Down East, Down East Broadband. So that is the first section of the report. And then we go on to a bunch of numbers. So again, I just want to say this is like all very high-level, there are various scenarios. And what we, what we did was just really tried to provide a high-level picture of, of what things might cost if we were to build out and own our own broadband infrastructure, again, under various scenarios. So looking at the total cost and a high-level cost of what it would cost to build out and own our own infrastructure, it would be, the high-low estimate we have is 3.9 million. But under the right scenarios, so we looked at what that could be, if there were grants involved, if we avoided certain costs, like what are called make-ready costs, what it costs to get everything on the poles. If there are certain ways to, to, to pare it down, it, our low, our low-end estimate was 2 million. So the, essentially, these estimates are on par with what the Tilson Report had estimated back in 2015, which was 3.5 million. Again, another very high-level estimate, and I would say our estimates are probably a bit more detailed than that. And then Mark also provided us with what we wanted, a phased approach to construction. So breaking the project down into three areas on the island, looking at the least-served portion of the island first, which is the north end, and that, the cost for that is an estimated 1.6 million. And then looking at the east, east part of the island, 1.4 million. And then essentially, what we're calling the west, but it's really the spectrum-served area, and that's 900,000. So we have those high-level estimates breaking down by phase. And then we get into some more details around the financial modeling. So there's some sample revenue and expense models based on the phased approach and some estimated take rates for each area. And what Mark did, because Acxiom is an ISP, he was, he was able to use his business model in these scenarios. So it's really just one example of what some revenue and expense modeling would be. A different ISP would have different revenue and expense modeling. So he also provided us with some operations modeling, and that again is based on certain assumptions. So the operations models like really present sort of the worst-case scenario and the best-case scenario for what the project costs would look like. So assuming that the entire project of 3.9 million was paid or with a 20-year bond, the worst-case scenario is that the project with revenue, expenses and paying off the bond, it would come close to but not achieve a positive cash flow in year 20. So that's with a 20-year municipal bond. So that's sort of like the worst-case scenario. And then if you go to the best-case scenario, and there's, there's other scenarios in here, I'm just doing either end of the spectrum. But if you go to the best case, of the, the best-case scenario, that's where we would be able to get grants and avoid certain make-ready costs. We're looking at bonding, again, if you were, if you were going to bond, bonding 2 million. And under that scenario, the model shows that we could achieve a positive cash flow in year five. So again, these are models, they're, they're assumptions, a lot of assumptions being made, but it's, it's one way to look at it. It's sort of one, one way to visualize the project. And then Mark also includes what grant options are out there. And as I mentioned earlier, there's a lot of money that's coming down the pike. And usually, grant opportunities are really just available, at least the broadband grant opportunities are just available for unserved or underserved areas. And for us, that's the north end of the island and parts of the eastern end, it's not the spectrum area. So if we do get grants, it will be to fund those phases of the project, that would be in the, the north and the east. So likely, we could get some funding to cover those parts of those projects. So what's next with this report? So what we're, what we're really asking you to do, once the report is available, I will send it to you and it will be online on the town's website. But we're asking you and members of the community to read the report. And if for some reason you can't access the report, my contact information's going to be at the end of this presentation, you can reach out to me and I will make sure you get a copy of the report. But if you can read the report and then reach out with questions or comments, or better yet, attend the upcoming broadband report community presentation. Again, that's going to be on Thursday, December 3rd. Again, that's going to be on Thursday, December third, and it's going to be at six P M. It will be online and we'll make sure to have announcements. And as I mentioned earlier, Mark Allett, the author of the report, Mark from Axiom Technologies, and also Kendra Jo Wilson, who's a community development officer and working on the broadband team at the Island Institute. She served it, or does serve as a, as somewhat of a technical advisor to us at times. So she'll also be present to answer questions. So that's sort of the next step we're asking you and members of the community to do with the report. And then next steps for the committee. So we were fortunate enough, and I, and we mentioned this before in meetings, to receive a community broadband grant from the Maine Community Foundation. So really what that will do is allow us to do a community broadband campaign. So that's really getting a lot of this information out to the community and really trying to understand what the community's goals are for broadband. We know from the work we've done so far, the goals we've identified in, in the very, in the, through the various surveys and outreach that has happened so far. But we really want to assess that this is a different time. Covid has made it a different time. So we really want to understand what does the community need? What does the community want? So really to determine what the community's broadband goals are. We also want to be working, continuing to work with those existing ISPs to see what is the feasibility of a possible public private partnership? What are their goals? What are their intentions with their own build outs? Are they, would they do it regardless of town involvement? Or is it only if we are going to partner with them? And that idea of maybe having a few more conversations with Fox Eye if they are willing. And then the ultimate goal is to establish some sort of community consensus for one of the two proposed options that we see before us. So, and I say two proposed options because really it comes down to sort of, you know, doing it on our own, sort of doing it, you know, as a community owned system or working with an incumbent provider to do a public private partnership. So that would, that would be our ultimate goal is to come to a community consensus because we know no matter what, it's going to have to go to vote if we're going to be borrowing money to do anything with this project. So really what, yeah, I would say that, that's probably where, where I should, would, I should probably wrap up because I want to turn it over to Jan Ann now and just let her have the last few words on where we're at and, and where we want to go.
Oh, am I live now?
You are. Thank you.
The amount of work that Gabe has done in this wonderful presentation leaves me with few words left. Only to reiterate the key points is that we have two choices. We build our own or we figure out a deal to participate with an incumbent. But I think our next step now, and this is the, the perfect time for it, is to start our outreach to the community. Because we need their participation. We need them to be talking about it, interested in it, figuring out what is the best for the community, not just what the task force decided. It is up to the community to decide. And we need to figure out ways to meet with as many people as possible and get a real consensus of where we're at. As far as the board is concerned, we ask that you read this report and that you also start the buzz, talk to people, let them know this is coming. This is going to be more of a challenge than normal when we can't be out on the streets, meeting with people and going to endless meetings and so forth. So we're going to have to work a little bit harder to get that word out. But we ask you as the board to endorse our plan, to, to follow through on this, to use this grant to do the best job we can to reach as many of the community citizens as possible and make a really good informed decision that everybody can buy into. So I thank you for your attention. Gabe, you're amazing.
Well, Jan Ann, right back at you, as I like to say. You've been our fearless leader and your fortitude. And, and also we joke, but Jan Ann is our poster child for why we need to broadband, or why we need to.
I'm kind of losing it.
Universal broadband. Okay. So just to wrap up, a thank you and any feedback or questions? And just the town website there for anyone who doesn't know it, be able, you'll be able to access the broadband report from the homepage, hopefully after eleven fifteen twenty. We'll also be making an announcement through our usual channels on the website and through social media. And please do reach out, members of the public, members of our community, talk with Jan Ann, talk with me. Our contact is there. We'd love to answer questions and share any information that we have. And with that, thank you, Select Board, for your attention and we welcome feedback and questions.
Thank you very much, Gabe and Jan Ann.
Any questions?
No, that was a great report. Thank you.
Is there any way someone can email us to remind us to go look at it or email us on link? Because I might forget why they're doing.
I will, I will send it to you. I will send it to you.
If you could just send it to all the Select Boards.
Will do. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Road Commissioner's report.
Any questions on generally on how things are going? We, we did get the sands all here, they're starting to mix the salt with it. New backhoe's here, needs a little bit of troubleshooting at the moment. But currently parked up by the, around the island road. They've had the, out of the box, some issues with some of the hoses, I guess. So we're waiting to hear back on that.
Questions?
No, I think they've been doing a good job.
Okay, we'll go on to old business, committee inventory and best practices.
Does she kind of already do that?
Does she do it all?
No, I mean, that's not really.
That's Mark, right?
I think Matt was gonna give us an update on this.
Yeah, I, Andy, do you have the slides?
I thought I copied them all. You want to try and screen share?
Yeah, I can do that. Yeah, so giving a bit of an update on where we are with working on the committee best practices policy and any of the resources that we can give to committee members and chairs to help out with the work they're doing. We can start with a bit of an, just a overview again of what the committees, what committees we have. And Gabe went over the ad hoc committees there and you can see the standing committees we have on the right here. One of the, one of the things we're working on and hope to clarify by producing a draft policy is clarifying what standing committees do versus ad hoc committees. With ad hoc committees being committees that are formed with having a particular task in mind and ideally with a overall timeline, very, you know, broad, probably vague timeline, but a timeline nonetheless of how they would accomplish that task. Whereas standing committees would be given a particular role that they would be doing indefinitely. And so the ones we have here on the left that are ad hoc, a lot of them, like the broadband task force, there is a particular task they have in mind at the moment of getting, of figuring out the best way of getting broadband to the island. But there could be a place for them after, say, the implementation of a, you know, fiber to premise broadband network on the island. And so part of the, part of the goal of the policy that Gabe and I have been working on in terms of getting a draft done has been sussing out where those, where all the committees stand right now and clarifying a bit for, for everybody involved, what exactly the, the general scope of their, their roles are. And so some of the, some of the goals that we have involved with getting a best practices policy drafted would be clarifying where each committee, what their goals are of each committee, which can include clarification of whether they're ad hoc or standing and also how they work in, in relationship to the town, the town office and also the Select Board, you know, how frequently their, the committees are reporting to the Select Board, how much responsibility the Select Board are delegating to the committees. And also improving, another goal would be improving the committee outcomes by just making sure they have everything that they need to achieve. You know, committees are by and large component to volunteers who are giving time out of their day and out of their weeks and out of their lives to help the town achieve a goal. And so to ensure that they can be working as effectively as possible, it's important to ensure that they have any of the technical skills or the soft skills to, to achieve their goals in the best way possible. And also in general, just making sure that each committee is staying on task and focused is another goal of the policy, just clarifying what they should be trying to do now within a month, within a finite fiscal year, within developing a longer term vision of what their committees, the committee's role is. And some of the, some of the details of that policy, again, this is a draft policy. So some of this is definitely subject to change and incorporates a lot of the feedback that the Select Board gave to Gabe last, last meeting, are these here. So a couple of the bigger ones are, you know, again, examining how the committees are functioning right now and maybe do a bit of a reshuffling if ones have been dorm, you know, not operating as of late, like say the firework committee and figuring out what exactly its role is going forward. And that would also include, of course, reorganizing and having an idea of where they all stand as ad hoc or standing committees. And like I mentioned in the goals, making sure that each committee has the structure and support they need to get the job done. And so that can involve making resources from someone like in the town office, making them available to provide any sorts of trainings, like video conferencing software, if people aren't familiar with it, or if committee chairs are like some tips and information on how better to facilitate group meetings, that could be pretty useful as well. And then in addition to all that, you know, making sure that committee members are also able to work more effectively with one another and the Select Board and also the community at large. There can be a little difficult to get a hold of committees sometimes and get an idea of what sort of work they're doing. And that can involve getting their meetings on a schedule, like the town, the town master schedule that's on the town website, and also getting the minutes posted. There's some inconsistency in regard to that. So hopefully a policy would help regularize how those, how those meetings and schedules and minutes are being posted and also making sure that they are generally more accessible to the community. And another big overarching goal, tenet of the policy would be reinforcing a culture of timeliness and making sure that these communities are staying on task and staying focused throughout the year, which, you know, encouraging them to have, have a mission drafted, like we talked about last Select Board meeting. And also making sure that the committee chairs have what they need to create the culture, which can involve, you know, some of those soft skills, but also just making sure that they have an idea what their overall responsibilities are. And so next steps in general is work with committee chairs and also Select Board on helping them develop a bit of a yearly calendar so we can have more regular check ins, like directly, whether they'll go through someone like Gabe, as we had this week with ad hoc committees reporting to Gabe and then Gabe relaying that those reports to the Select Board or having committee chairs report directly to the Select Board is always, obviously something that's up to them. But it's something I'm hoping to work on is kind of sussing out exactly when they want to be reporting, when they would feel comfortable, and then also working with the Select Board on doing that. And then a longer term goal in drafting a committee handbook that would include this policy and would be a combination of the policy and also any of the resources that are available, that should be made available for committees, especially committee chairs. And some, basically, if they ever have a question about running a committee or how one operates, this would be a sort of master resource, including anything they would need. And yeah, so that's where we're at right now on, on committees. And if any, anyone on the Select Board has any questions, we're happy to hear them.
Thank you very much, Matt. Okay, transfer station swap shop survey results.
Andy, you have slides? Yeah, oh, there you go. Okay. So I, I don't know if you all saw this in your report this week or not, but it was a pretty, I think, a pretty successful participation with a hundred and seventy two surveys returned. And so what we're, I'm talking about tonight is only, there's multiple sides to the survey, but my biggest interest was in the swap shop parts of it. And I think the reason that you sent us, put us on hold until we got the results of the survey was because you wanted to be sure that people wanted a swap shop. And I think when you read that first bullet point there, only seven people said they never used a swap shop. And most people said they use it to drop off usable items, but I think it's a hundred people then ranked what they use it for. Yes, it says right there, answered a hundred of the hundred and seventy, ranked the things that they use it to look for. So the fact that, that it's a, looks like we just don't get rid of our stuff here is not, I don't think that's a fair answer because you could only pick one. And so you might be, you might find it more important to get rid of things that you think might have use than you do to get stuff, but most people do, that are dropping also occasionally, pick up stuff. And I think it's just a pretty clear and positive response that people want swap shop. And I don't, and so I think we should be working on finding a way to open it. Andy is probably going to talk about, is that from you, Andy, or is that from?
This is, I just cut out the letter that you had written for the board and that kind of highlighted the committee's recommendations.
Right, so we, we have the option of doing it at the, at the transfer station, but Andy has an idea of using the Public Works Building? Because one of the, one of the things we would have seen in that survey is that hardly anybody asks the attendants if what they're dropping off is appropriate. Hardly anybody says, should I pay for this ahead of time? A few people do, but it's also hard to imagine. Every time I go to the transfer station now, I see a person putting something outside the building. I don't go that often, but without fail, somebody's putting something outside the building. And I don't know whether there, somebody's carting it off or they end up putting it up and throwing it in the trash. But it's hard to, for me to imagine that Kenny and Luther, I mean, part of our ideas was that you would, were that you would check in with them before you dropped. And I think Andy's point was that the old habits that we have, the way we've always used it, it's not, we're not going to retrain people to interrupt Henry, either of the attendants to check in on them. So we could start new habits in a new place. And he was talking about using the Public Works Building as a temporary place that would provide a bigger, cheerier, better air, very airy, right? Spot and figuring out how to work on that. So anyway, what we're asking tonight is based on the survey, your blessing for us to continue to work on working out how to do a good plan that would keep the stuff out of the dumpster and not be a sinkhole for stuff that is pure trash that people are, that people drop off. So I, I mean, we don't, we don't have plans. We have. So I, I mean, we don't, we don't have plans. We have ideas, but we don't have plans and don't want to do it if you're not going to say. If you want to say, no, we don't want to swap shop. So.
Oh, no, we need to have a swap shop.
Yeah, I think.
Well, I think we wanted to see the survey before we proceeded, so we haven't been doing, we're just been waiting on this accomplishment here.
I just, how much, how much gets thrown away each year?
Don't know.
It just, it seems like people, yes, to get rid of things, but it seems like they just get rid of things that they should have paid to throw away. I'm, obviously people want it, so I'm not going to say no. People want, I'm just concerned that we're going to continue to have people just bring garbage to the swap shop where it should just go in the dumpster.
And that's, that's why we need to have a management system in play. I mean, we have to plan this. The Kenny would say that when Bodine Ames was alive, she managed the swap shop. She was the manager and it wasn't like it is now. I don't think she would have ever stopped anybody from putting stuff in there, but she would have kept it up and kept it clean. When I've seen Kenny and Luther, it's time to clean it out. That was even one of the comments on the thing, you know, somebody could have dropped something off in the morning, but they go in with the bucket loader and throw everything in there and they throw in, if books are something that was there, they could have gone into the recycling, but they just throw it in the bucket thing and then put it in the dumpster. So it needs to be managed. It can't just run by itself. And so figuring out how to do that with volunteers is, is the big idea of the day.
Yeah, exactly.
I move, we endorse their continuing efforts.
I'll second that, that's going to be a vote.
You want to maybe just clarify what those continuing, I mean.
Find a way to continue the swap shop, possibly.
Well, I move, we endorse the continuing efforts to make the physical improvements, continue planning for its reopening.
Right. So that, I guess that's the part I want to clarify, you know, you know, that's what was written. Pat and I had talked a little bit about one thing that you might have seen in the full, all the documents that were shared in your packet. You know, were some of the comments that were included that you can't put into a graph form. And what made me think about, you know, some of what Pat talked about is, you know, this is how we do it. Are there changes that are expected to be made? Yes, a lot of the handwritten or written in things talked about organization, more structure. And so the, the art we need to bat in the stuff that shouldn't be in the dumpster or that is a useful place for people to go and get useful products. You know, and how do you, one, how do you break the habit? Two, how do you solve the, the many written comments about a bigger space, a more organized space? And I don't know how we do that in one twenty foot container, thirty foot container, whatever that is. You can add a window, you can add a fan, but I don't think you, you can add a few more shelves, but I don't really know how much, you're not going to get much bigger. And then that's where, you know, I talked to Pat, is, you know, what about, what are we going to do with the public works garage in the short term? You know, how do we accommodate more organization, more room? You know, thinking about the new habits, I mean, we might want to bring in if there's volunteers that are willing to manage the swap shop when it reopens. Could the public work history potentially serve as an intermediary use while we continue to figure out what happens thereafter, the departments relocated? It's a bigger building. It could be seasonal because in the wintertime it's not heated. Is that something that you would want to try and pursue? Honestly, I don't know what two hundred and twenty dollars towards the box that's up there really gains us in the long term question or solution to having a swap shop that many people want to keep continuing.
I think that's a great idea, but in the meantime, my motion is to endorse their efforts to make physical improvements and continue planning for a reopen. That's what they're asking for. That's why my motion is, and I think in the meantime, we should definitely explore that alternative.
Right. So that would be part of, I think that would be part of our proposal. Amy and I would look at the building and see if, see how we thought it could work and we, you know, expand those ideas about how to make it safe, like quarantining. While we're still in COVID, quarantining dropped off items for a while. Figuring out how to do it, figuring out what the hours would be and then come back to you with a proposal on what we can do with that. And how, what we're suggesting. Can I, can I turn in that three hundred and twenty dollars? I, I don't, I think Andy didn't want it because it was, I don't know where you put it, but why, in the meantime, but you'll have it in your head that you have a donation towards swap shop renewal of that amount. And also we have to have a, the drawing, I think, I don't know how that happens.
Oh, I've had, I'm, I'm jumping in. I, I, I'm jumping in to say, we, we had a drawing, the outreach person at the town has not made a Facebook post, but has contacted the two winners. So Viva Rosen and Lindsay Davis were our two winners. They each won a fifty dollar transfer station credit.
Good. Okay, great.
Thank you, Pat and Amy. Thank you. Alright, so that motion hasn't been moved to seconded many moons ago. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much, Pat.
I think you guys, you girls are doing a great job. Very.
Yeah, we just talk. But yeah, we're going to.
Yeah, we've got him out.
Okay, new business, Portrait of a Graduate.
So my apologies. That was a, I had sent a memo to strike that from this, this, tonight's agenda. So it was not struck, but it is not happening.
Okay. Sign municipal quickly, then for ease bin to access to a certain parcel.
We have, now we, yeah. Gave the authorization for the board to sign up behalf of the community.
Yeah. It's a very fun little.
Well, I second Eric's motion. Let's get this over with.
Is there any discussion of this matter?
Let's discuss a loop.
Do we have another special town meeting?
So many attended tonight.
All of what was in paper. Okay. Yeah, I do have a specific copy that needs to be signed, uh, uh, May.
Put your Johnny in.
In the presence of, there's no signatures, there's a witness. Fine, but there's no. I don't know. I'll, I'll do it with you after it is. Fiscal year twenty-two budget town meeting process. As if we're ever going to have a town meeting.
Fortunately or unfortunately, it's getting close to being that time of year where I start to go through last year's budget books and start clearing it out and getting ready for the planning of next year's budget books. And so I want to try and get ahead of and create that calendar and that work plan. Last year we set a goal out to town meeting from June to May. Obviously that was delayed until July with COVID. And we don't know what's going to happen this spring, you know, but we can be prepared one way or the other. If you want to set out a process to potentially be ready in May or June, whatever you're looking to do. But if I, we can start with that goal of a town meeting date, I can work backwards from there. This is on here, as you recall, last year you'd worked through kind of a modified strategic planning process. Hoping that this year's budget building process puts this at the forefront of thinking about goals for the departments, budgets, and what are we spending money on, how it's connected to, you know, the bigger picture here. You know, so with that, we had a department meeting last week, just kind of bringing that up. Matt's working with us on trying to tie those two together, the strategic plan and this year's budget process, like updating some worksheets for the departments. So with that, I don't know if you just want to kind of give me your thoughts on the process, starting with the town meeting. You want to try and, try and do that in May?
I think we should probably try and hold this like in June, towards the end of June, like we used to, just so we have as much time as needed. And then school can be out, maybe if we're going to have to use the auditorium, it is still COVID. We don't want to be bringing people up there and then they're going to be using school on Thursday. We want it to be, that's my opinion. I think we should try and hold it like towards the last week of June, like we always did previously. Yes, there's, I mean, we have to have it before July first. I mean, unless there's another state of emergency, which I hope, which we're still in, I guess. But I mean, I think we should try, set it for like that Wednesday of the last week of June. That's just my part, or Tuesday, whatever day we used to do it, but that's my.
I think Jake's right. We need to aim later, you know, there.
Yeah. I mean, I don't want to have a lot of people trapped in another school if we don't need to have it.
No, I don't. I think the school would be appreciative of that.
Um, so I can, I'll work backwards from there to build it out and look like it usually has been. I guess the other big checkpoint, I guess, too, I have is last year I tried to do something slightly different at the beginning of, in February, when the budget books were available, and that was to try and have a joint meeting with, with the board of selectmen and the budget committee members. Have the department heads present to both groups at the same time. You're given the same information at the same time. You might have similar questions at the same time. You know, and then after that process, the committee can continue to meet and dive in further if they want. The board can wait for the recommendations and continue your, your review process. You want to still try and have that joint selectman and budget committee meeting with departments coming out.
I assume it can be held virtually. Yeah, I think that would be a good idea. Then like all the department heads would only have to show up to one.
Yeah.
One thing or the other. I mean, instead of coming to two, I think, yes.
Yep, that makes sense. I'm going to try and get the budget committee together this month, if I can, just to kind of give them an update of where we are this fiscal year so they can see it, something I haven't usually done, but just trying to bring that back in. I'd propose that in early December. So I usually give out the goal worksheets the first week or second week in December for the department heads to think about that. And then before Christmas, usually they have them returned back to me. My goal is to get those then consolidated and sent to you and the budget committee members to start thinking about it. What are they thinking of? Trying to bring that strategic plan into focus and have them build off of the board's vision and what you're trying to work towards and see how it you know, feeds up and what we're all trying to accomplish. And I think it'd be worthwhile by the first week of December, maybe either a workshop, special or part of your regular meeting. Just review where we are in accomplishing that strategic vision or plan. What haven't we done? What are we working on? And to see how you might want to direct. One of the feedbacks, some of the feedback I've gotten from some of the department heads is, well, sometimes our work plan really is just our operational work plan. The things we know we have to do, you know, and if we're trying to connect it to the strategic plan of the board, like if the board has goals, we should know what they are. And then we can help work towards and accomplish those. And so again, trying to put that at the start of the process, so they know. So if we have, if you were to have something that reviewed where you're at, what's being worked on, what do you want to focus more on or less on? Is there something we're seeing that just came up that we need to include? And then that can go to the board, to the departments as they're thinking about budgets. Do I need to increase staff capacity? Do I need to shift and not get this done this year and focus on getting this instead? And start to see the budget planning, bring that together. And so if you're willing to do that, we can even do that, try and do that about the first week or so of December. If that makes sense.
Well, nobody will be outgoing on vacation, so we'll call your time to work on it.
Yeah, I just found out today that I'll be working from home for the foreseeable future. Or until further notice. Alright, I'll start working on that kind of calendar for this coming year's process.
And report to the company.
I did have a, just a couple of things, I guess, to highlight. We've, we've continued to have a few challenges with the Zoom or virtual meetings and being able to, we had a few technical issues with the sewer committee a couple of weeks ago. Mostly it was on my computer, but then we had, the phone wasn't working and so it was kind of fumbling. We do have challenges at times with everyone being able to be heard with the microphone we have here, either of the microphones we use. And, you know, so I think it's time that, you know, we talked a little bit about the Zoom connector, which allows us to use the life-size system we want to and get a better capability for certain meetings. And there are extendable mics for that system. The system that we're using tonight doesn't have, has a nice three sixty degree view. So if you have a smaller group table, you can see everyone at once. And the life size is a little bit more fixed camera view, but it, it has the option to have extendable mics. Meeting all because when it recognizes sound, it puts the camera to that. If you have extendable mics, they don't have anything that I've seen yet that works well with it, but we can also look at that as well.
So when you say six hundred dollars a year, I mean, presumably this will end at some point and we wouldn't have to keep paying six hundred dollars a year.
That's possible. That's up to the board to decide. I mean, whether the committees continue to meet and want to see the value in it or whether the public sees the value in.
Some of the boards have members that aren't here around people, so.
I feel like we're doing just fine as it is.
I'm just curious, well, is that it all really like, that was something that was going to be forever?
No.
Everybody can access pretty easily right now virtually and.
Some can, some can't. I mean, on our end, trying to set it up and manage it, it does present challenges at times that, you know, you're not in a lot of the meetings you don't necessarily see. And I think these things would make it easier. I threw in the possibility of the headphones, microphones, just to help support staff and some of the committee members, if they needed them. Not a huge investment there, but it's something that helps make it easier for them to participate in either our work or our processes that we're asking them to do. So unless there's any major objections, I was going to move forward with.
Once a mic's on.
And this is what they call it, so.
That's those extendable things that you were just talking about.
Yeah, so the, with the life size, we could put that speaker-based microphone, like where the one is now, and then just run two extendables out either under the table, you know, we could actually have a little further part if we needed to and still be able to pick it up.
So you, you recommending all three? Zoom, life-size and headphone? That life-size, that seemed to. I thought that worked pretty good.
It does. It just, when we're meeting in the room and have to wear the mask, you know, it's already muffled, the distance doesn't help. And so it just helps enhance that experience. I mean, you know, Pam had a challenging time hearing us sometimes. And so it just adds that extra help to make sure that everyone's able to hear. And we get the feedback once in a while on our live streams, even that, you know, sometimes I can't hear every, everything. And that just, there's technology to be able to accomplish this and it really shouldn't be one of the challenges right now. So.
I think personally, for I mean, for, to spend that money for this year, coming year, it's not a great deal of money and where we use so much of it, because we have to meet virtually. Certainly doesn't seem like a huge investment, but then after this hopefully COVID goes away, it won't be such a, you know, it's an expense that we might not have to incur on an annual basis.
I mean, now that the vaccine has been announced and we'll be out, you know.
It won't. It will not be available in the public floor, probably till, I would say, next summer.
They said June, they said June.
They haven't finished their face trial. It's not even approved yet, so. You know, in my, in the meantime, the winter months is, are our biggest times that the committees are most active, right? So we, in my opinion, we need to put something forward that makes it as easy as possible for them to meet. The restrictions to meet in person are continuing to get a little tighter. And some of our committees are too big to all get in here at once anyways. The budget committee is a good example. They're nine if they're full.
What's that, what's the headphones and microphones? That always kind of be something, I mean, you can't really share headphones, can you?
Now, so I'm thinking of groups like the budget committee where, again, we can't get everyone in here at once. And so if they needed something like that to make sure that we can hear them, again, for twenty dollars a headphone. They're doing this work on our, it was something that they needed to have and support it. If the staff needed, now the staff have them. And if they're going to be at their desk doing training, more trains online, you know, they wouldn't have to go anywhere. So it's just, again, small things to help support the reality of what, how we're trying to accomplish things today.
So any emotion on that or just you just put it into budget?
We don't. I mean, I was going to do it unless there's major objection.
Does somebody even want to make a motion to purchase?
No move.
I mean, if that, if that's what you, you are the one that does it, so if you think you may not find it.
Let's second about Pam.
You've got a.
Yeah, Gabe would like to.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say that, you know, going along with the work that Matt is doing in terms of supporting our volunteers and the work that they're doing, you know, we've been talking, Andy and. our volunteers and the work that they're doing, um, you know, we've been talking, Andy and I have been talking about the Zoom connector since pre-COVID. So it's not just the fact that COVID has, um, you know, forced us all online, but it was a tool that it just is useful in general, the Zoom connector, which is the only, um, thing on the list. That's a, that's an annual fee, but that's just that it really does expand, um, opportunities for people to participate. And, you know, if that is a goal of, of, of town government to have as much engagement as possible, I think the tools that we can access, um, for a nominal fee have a great, a, a far greater benefit than the actual cost to, to, um, be able to purchase it. So I just wanted to just throw that in there because of the comments about, um, you know, yes, yes, making a decision to purchase it for this year. But, um, you know, that in subsequent years, it's going to be just as useful. So I just wanted to put that out there.
The movement seconded, any more discussion?
I just have a question, does the town, do we get money from the state? Or I know like the, these things, those monies available to do the what I'm not certain what the acronym is.
The question glass?
Well, yeah, but I don't know what all the things, what it's called, like some is PPE and, you know, what I'm saying. So is money available to help offset that fifteen hundred dollars?
It's been asked of others, I mean, and that was one of the first things people were saying, well, geez, we have to use virtual platforms now. And they were saying that at the time, virtual platform subscription fees were not eligible for those state funds.
Okay.
Um, but yes, a lot of folks had asked about that because otherwise they weren't doing it.
Yeah.
But they didn't see that, meaning the federal guidelines for, for, you know, for cost sharing, yeah.
So the answer is no?
Yeah.
Okay.
Roundabout way, no. Okay, now any more discussion? All those in favor? And opposed?
The, um, this says I, at the time I wrote this, I had not heard back from the sheriff. As of today, I did hear back from the sheriff. Um, we do still not have, um, a contract back from their lawyer. Um, but they don't have it back from the lawyer, they said it's still, it's close. Um, I continue to, at least weekly, once a week at least, to try and say, where is it? We need to have something. Um, and from what I understand, there is someone who has been hired, who will be become a, a full-time deputy for Vinyl Haven. Um, in best case scenario, they're here within the next, I think, three weeks, he said, they need to go through their field training. Um, so that's, that's positive. Um, and how we continue to fill the other shifts so that there's seven nights a week with the goal. Um, as we set out in the next, in this contract we're waiting to finalize. Um, I think we'll continue to work towards finding that solution. And so they, the sheriff was proposing that we just move forward with the one deputy at the moment while the other contracts being reviewed. Um, I don't really see the difference. I think we still keep working towards the two deputy, the seven nights a week rather, contract solution. Um, because if we continue to push that off, it'll be next summer by the time we're done with it. So, uh, we'll continue to work, try and get them to do that.
Wouldn't, sorry, what do they mean by close? Like they're still reviewing it, they have changes to it or they just haven't signed it yet or a vote? All of you, but. Cause I'm assuming if they have changes, then we have to get it back in and we have to review it.
Right. I wasn't aware, I mean, I'm not aware of any substantial changes from what we had presented to them. Um, with that last time I had heard, you know, I think they've just had other time, other, other issues and other things. But they've also had to put time forward that they've just delayed it.
What was the timeline on that? Was it November first through December next year we had in the contract?
Yeah, they wanted to put it on the calendar year because they operate a calendar year, North Haven operates on a calendar year budget. Um, so they wanted them just, they could have wind up. So yeah, we were going to take it through the rest of this calendar year and all of next calendar year. Um, the exemption and abatement process for the Hurricane Island Foundation, um, we did get an update on. Uh, a next, another domino falls for the, um, the exemption request that was filed started over a year ago. Um, so the foundation did file their ADP brief, which will file a response to that. And then they have fourteen days to file a reply, but moving forward, but ever so slow. Just to let you know of that. Town office was closed today, the server was being, um, part one of the migration, the new server setup and the migration. Um, and tomorrow's a holiday. And ambulance billing, um, I think Kerry joined. Um, Kerry had reached out to a couple of, um, it's good to, the current ambulance billing company we use, uh, we signed a contract back in two thousand and ten, um, just like with the banking, just like with other services. Sometimes it's good to check and see other, others that are out there. It's a checkpoint to say, are we getting a good rate, a good price? You know, and just learn, learn about the other options that are out there. So, um, Kerry did do a little bit of research to see what other companies might also be doing this in Maine. There's a bunch of them that do on a national basis, um, you know, but there are a few in Maine. And we did have a meeting with one of them just to learn what they're, what they're about. Um, and so I guess it's just a matter of, do you want, would you be comfortable with us soliciting prices, uh, feedback, understanding, you know, other ways that we could be doing it different, better? Um, so I'm happy to continue to solicit that feedback. Uh, the current contract does require a thirty day notice to, uh, cancel if that was the route to go. Um, but I think the first step would be just stand up there.
Yeah, I think maybe teaching Higgins, you know, if they knew there was a little competition, might not be the worst thing in the world.
Yeah, it's been ten years since we looked at it, I think it's worth.
And, you know, and it's been a tumultuous ten years.
Yes. Especially with all the bill and change that last year or even twice this year.
Yeah, just, just this year alone.
I don't want to learn what they do on there.
Kerry, did you have any, um, anything to add or any thoughts?
Um, yes, I, I, we really and truly, even since I've been here, I've seen a decline in our billing quality and quantity. Um, coming from Higgins and, um, there's not a lot of receptive conversation that goes on back and forth. Um, Darlene spends a significant amount of time picking up the slack from what the billing company should be doing. So some of what we're looking for is a company that has, you know, similar price, but gives us the reports that Darlene's having to try and figure out on her own. Um, and then maybe some more revenue because we're not seeing a really good percentage of billing coming back. So I think it's a really good idea that we take a look around.
I agree.
Yeah, thank you, Kerry, for taking the initiative.
Uh, COVID updates, uh, so the grant period for, uh, the He-Man Healthy Grant Program was extended through December. Um, and so we did have approximately twelve thousand, that was, had been unspent, uh, from the thirty thousand roughly that we had gotten. Um, so I re, um, I sent in an updated budget, um, so that we could reallocate or start, you know, continue to utilize that. And so a lot of it being emphasized on outreach in PPE that we might continue to need to support, um, that grant program in the community. Um, there has been a delivery of what they call those rapid tests, uh, to the, to a lot of the islands. Um, you know, those, those only work in certain situations, you know, those that are symptomatic. The EMS service has them to help screen the EMTs if they've, um, become and had significant contact, having exposure. You know, so that's going to be helpful in identifying and trying to get ahead of, you know, potential exposures. Um, and we do continue to meet weekly, um, sometimes more so, um, the public health team. As I mentioned before, just to continue to see, we have seen a lot of increases in the state over the last two weeks, a significant increase over the last two weeks. So there's a lot going on, we're, I think, all aware of North Haven's confirmed cases. Um, so we continue to be in contact with them just to, to understand how things are changing there. Uh, we have been the last two days talking as a team about, um, you know, what North Haven has been doing, the state of the main CDC and their, you know, where they are and being able to do the contact tracing and asking questions like, should we be looking into contact tracing on a local effort? Um, and, you know, what about confirmed cases? So we explored and talked about this early on and just acknowledging confirmed case counts. Um, and so we're just going back through that again with the, with the medical center and our public health team just to understand, you know, legally what can be done. You know, from a liability and just practical standpoint, can we deliver a contact tracing kind of program or not? Um, so just so you're aware, we are talking about that. Um, I'm trying to learn, learn what's possible that way. Um, I did share, I didn't put in here, but the risk management, you know, they come out every year and look through, um, some of our buildings. They rotate them, they look at a few one year and then a couple more the next year. And so in your board packet, I did print out a copy of this year's report. I couldn't remember if I had shared that before or not, but, um, it kind of gives you an idea of things that we have to work on that probably weren't on any of our lists to do. Um, so we, I think we got a couple, a couple outstanding from last year that aren't huge, but, you know, things that we're trying to work towards. Um, I think, for example, one of the ones on there was the retaining wall of the transfer station. They identified that as something that we should fix. And so I said, you know, we, we did start a process with the engineers to look at it. And we've got a lot, a lot of other competing projects to work on as well. So, um, that is one example of something we need to work on. Um, talk about the budget. Site visit tomorrow, um, with the, with Sheridan, the company that's going to do the design build, the engineers. Um, you know, four or five folks come out for that to take a look at the building onsite and get a more thorough look at everything. That's the figure of what needs to happen and start coordinating that. Um, the sale did transfer the property this, last week, um, so that's finally happened. Um, and we'll steam ahead.
Good. Okay, board of members.
Bill?
Did we do the work out at the Indian Creek Bridge?
Yes.
Yeah, it's great.
Great improvement.
Yeah, I saw the picture.
That's great.
They had Luke and, uh, Chris down there last Sunday, I can see him from miles.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, they had done the step, they, they did the step then.
Chris and.
Yeah, so that we had talked about.
Chris's truck was over on the, you know, around the mountain road and, and, uh, Luke came in, brought down the rails. Whatever, he does a new name on that road, I can remember what it is.
Wilkes.
There you go, yeah, so.
Perfect.
So yeah, I watched him and then it took him more than one day because Luke left his tractor there for a few days and then Luke pushed it up.
Great.
Yeah, it's all done.
It's in my neighborhood.
Wicked, wicked gossip on the correct layer.
So, between the steps for Luke and Chris, thanks for doing that. It's been almost a year now, I think, since we identified wanting to fix that step, so. Good to have that and the guys, our crew did put the surface on the, that's what wasn't slippery.
That, that too, that was an improvement too, yeah. Particularly this one. And you, you and I talked about the town crew wrapping the, uh, frame in the, you know, they're going to do that, right?
Yeah, that's on our list to do it, whether it's them or just me or someone else, but yeah, we're good, Doug.
And Pam?
And you have, um, on your list of things to do, uh, the trees at Lawson's to talk about or whoever I talked to about that?
Yeah.
I don't know who is.
But did I leave, I was going to tell Derek, tell one of them to call you or you were going to call one of them?
They were supposed to get in contact with me, we go up and mark trees. And waiting for a report from Chris, an estimate on, on installation of new handrails and such at Boots Quarry. So hopefully I'll get that before budgets gets that started.
I had, I had a call from a guy about setting up a like a trap compactor and I gave him Gabe's email because I didn't really know, I mean, that's something.
Oh, trap compactor, I see what you're saying.
They, it's, uh, his name was Buzz Scott, I believe he delivers, I don't know if he's originally committed to it, I guess, or he used to live out there. But I gave him Gabe's email and they want to have something set up where they can crush traps.
What idea?
And recycle, they have a program to recycle the metal. So I just, before I forget, that guy called me, I don't know if he got in contact with Gabe, I just want to put it out there that he did call me.
What a great idea that is.
In case he says that I didn't, though, I just told him, you know, that there isn't a lot of room at the landfill as it is to, to do something like that. But that maybe if he contacted Gabe and through the town, we could find a space to set something up. Because apparently they make money and when they, they take the, the wire somewhere and recycle it, so I don't know. I told him, I told him to go, I don't know if he did call that Gabe, but if she's.
I think, yeah, I think someone, she had reached out about, I think something about that.
Yeah, we're just, um, we're just, I, we've been in touch and, um, he is going to, um, give me some dates for when he's going to come out here. And I'll be in touch with, um, Eric and with Kenny for a site visit and, uh, we'll take it from there.
Oh, man, I, I gave him your email, sorry, I didn't know who else to contact with, something about the transfer station, so.
Thank you, Jake.
Anything else?
I just had a question on the fireworks issue that came up last week. Did anyone go talk to the?
Er.
Perp. I know, I, as I haven't even followed up with the person who initially had the complaint. Because it is, as I think people know, mentioned, it is against state law to shoot up fireworks after certain hours, right? And it's also against the town ordinance, so the fact that that person said that that is true is in itself not true.
Right.
And it's also particularly dangerous in that, in that one.
Yep.
Well, it's so dry, yeah.
Well, not as dry as a couple of months ago, you know?
Is it unreasonable to think that we could send a delegate to the perpetrator and remind him then in fact that it does exist? I, I think that, that that would be very effective.
You might find, you might be sending a lot of delicate letters to a lot of people about, uh,
huh?
You might be fine, you might send a lot of delicate letters to a lot of different people, what a lot of different ordinance is. I mean, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, it's just that if you do it with this one case, you could do it for a hundred more, I'm sure.
Right, we had an actual complaint from someone.
Right.
And, and, and this is, you know, we're talking about, uh, someone being frightened, animal being frightened, a person being frightened, and there being a legitimate danger of fire. Seems to me that if it were, it seems reasonable that we would do that.
Has there been a recurrence of, has there been a recurrence?
I don't know.
You mean, was it a one time event?
No.
No, 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 there's several.
Once, once every so often.
Yeah.
Sounds like it just, it happens infrequently, frequently enough.
Me.
I'll ask her and if, and if there has been a recurrence, I'll let you know or we can send someone.
Yeah.
If the fire marshal, I mean, the fire chief were to go down there and say simply, there is an ordinance we're concerned, that would go a long way.
Yeah.
You know, in some cases, it might not be the property owners in which, you know, it's happening at a property, right? It might be a tenant, for example, on a property that it's happening at. And so I think the property owners, if they aren't aware of it happening on their property, they're ultimately responsible, you know, by the ordinance. And so if you have that property owner's permission, you're able to do it too. And I think, you know, the ordinance and maybe even the statute does require a minimum distance from buildings. Um, there are time, time limits.
I know there's a time limit, it's supposed to be before a certain time at night, except for on certain holidays like New Year's and the Fourth of July, it could be late, but every other day it's going to be before certain times.
Ten, ten PM, right?
I think it might be nine now.
It's nine.
I think it is nine, it's ten, right?
So, yeah. It's not the property owner now, I think that might go.
That's all.
Anything else? I move with you.
You have to do executive session.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have an executive session, I move to go into executive session pursuant to one MRSA, section four oh five, six A, discuss personnel matter. Thank you, everybody, for tuning in.
My second.
All those in favor?
Thanks, everybody.